Evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody and open up the town, New Windsor Town Council Meeting for May 6, 2020. If everyone would rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We, announcements of policies, we have our meetings recorded electronically. We are using Zoom Meeting again. I think this is our third meeting, second town council meeting. All five council Members are present, along with Town Manager Gary Die, Clerk Treasurer Donna Albin, Public Works Director Wayne Myers, and Town Attorney Michelle Ostrander. Welcome, everybody. Looks like a bigger crowd tonight, so words getting out. This is the way things are going to be for a while, conducting meetings, it looks like. So we do, as I said, go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on tonight's agenda should have had it to Town Hall via email or phone call by the previous Wednesday, last Wednesday. Approval of minutes from the April 1, 2020 Town Council Meeting. Donna has emailed those out to everybody. Any comments or questions? And just for the record, if you make a motion or a second, please state your name. That helps Donna a little bit. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Ned Pauls Grove here. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Terry Green here. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Ned Pauls Grove, seconded by Councilman Terry Green, to approve the minutes of the April 1, 2020 Town Council Meeting. All those in favor saying finally saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Minutes approved. Mayor's report. Find it here. Everybody else's reports. Of all the reports, I don't see mine. There we are, Mayor's report. All right, there's my report. Everybody can see my report?
Now I can.
Okay. First of all, I want to say how appreciative I think everyone is of our nurses. This is Happy Nurses Appreciation Week. So if you know of a nurse, give a little shout out to them. Also want to thank, give a thank you to all the frontline workers, and that is such a huge list now. Frontline workers that we never thought would be frontline workers in our grocery stores and convenience stores and grocery stores and Lowe's and wherever. So thank you for what they're doing. And also to our town staff that's keeping the town going on a staggered shift to prevent any outbreaks in Town Hall. So I want to give a shout out to our town staff as well. Some of the things I've been doing in the past month, like everyone else, is being updated. And with the coronavirus information, for the past three Wednesdays, the mayors of Carroll County have been getting together on Zoom. I've been organizing those. We'll have another one tomorrow evening. They have been extremely helpful, and I think we'll continue those even throughout any kind of epidemic that we have. We shoot IDLs back and forth. A couple you'll hear tonight. See if I can get down here, scroll down. Had a chamber breakfast on Zoom with County Commissioner Wance yesterday. Let's see what else going on here. Shared Commissioner Bochy's food assistance information, that he had gathered information from all the municipalities of where people could get food assistance. And then Gary may want to talk a little bit more about the lagoon project of the dirt being filled in. We, I've recommended that we go with a T-180 compacting, compaction testing. Gary can touch briefly on that a little bit. Been doing weekly checkups and even a little bit more often with our local businesses, mainly our restaurants, 7-Eleven. Most of them, for the most part, are doing pretty good. Their carryout is a little bit better on the weekends, but that's to be understood. But please continue supporting our local businesses. Commissioner Wance has been sending two to three email updates on coronavirus, yeah, coronavirus, and then been on the COVID-19 municipal govern, yeah, conference calls. Can't talk tonight, sorry. They've been usually on Friday afternoons and very informational. Been reviewing the 201 Main Street Park options and looking for donations of labor and services, cut down our costs a little bit. Working with Planning Commission Chairman Mark Schultz on a Zoom Planning Commission meeting. They need to have a meeting in May. And then I've been organizing our 2020 Memorial Day service. I think it's going to be a lot better than I had hoped for. Father and son who both served in the United States Armed Forces are working together. I'm not sure which one, or maybe they'll tag team, but that will be on a virtual platform as well. So it won't be the same as having it live at Presbyterian Church, but I think it's going to be very motivational and inspirational. So that's my report. Any questions or comments on my report? All right, council committees, community enhancement. Councilman Green.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, other council members and residents, thank you for joining tonight. As you know, we've stopped doing our banner projects and other projects we were working on for community enhancement during this time for COVID-19. So kind of going to use this a little bit of time to address and hopefully maybe get, be able to touch on this a little later with mayor and council as well. 3:00 PM today, the governor held a press conference discussing different things that we're going to be able to do here, starting at 7:00 AM tomorrow. So in case you didn't see it or haven't heard yet, the governor went ahead and opened outdoor recreation to the public, meaning boating, Ocean City, Maryland's going to be open at limited capacity, golf and other recreational activities, including parks and state parks as well. So I'm hopeful, as long as residents understand to keep practicing social distancing and wearing face masks in public settings around other people. Hopefully, we can open up our parks here as well to allow, especially now schools are closed, for residents to get out, play a little tennis, basketball, disc golf, skate park, and have the kids be able to get out there on the climbing equipment. That's my hope. Hopefully, we're able to go ahead and do that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. I know I'll be getting more information from the other mayors down Mountain Area. I know they're opening their parks, but it's, I think, more on a limit. I don't think they're opening up their basketball courts because it'll be, I think, too hard to keep the distancing. Tennis courts will be, but I don't think they're opening up their playgrounds either, because that also will be distancing. And I understand, you know, we all have different opinions of, you know, if everybody used common sense, you know, and we had maybe disinfectant machines everywhere with, you know, but right now I think we have to go slow, and I'll have more information that I'll share with everybody after tomorrow night's meeting, get a feel of what everybody else is doing in the county, so we can kind of be unified with it. So, but thank you on that. Community enhancement, Terry. One of the things, I don't know, maybe it's a pet peeve of mine, but it doesn't take that much to take care of the curbs in New Windsor. There's a lot of grass that people mow into the streets, which is not legal. And I'll give you an example. I went down one Thursday to clean up the Main Street Park, and I unclogged the drain. And it rained all day Friday, and I came back Saturday, and Zina and I went down to finish up, and there was grass that had clogged the drain again. So I know a little bit of grass doesn't seem like a big factor in front of your yard, but when you have maybe 20 more houses that gets to the drain, the inlet, it can cause some problems. So, and it just makes the town a little, little bit better if you take 10, 15 minutes after you mow to clean up in front of your house. And the other one is grass that people let grow a foot high in the sidewalks. You know, there's cracks in the sidewalks. Just take a little bit of time, a little bit of pride in our community to spruce it up a little bit. So that's off my soapbox. Any questions for Councilman Green?
And Neil, real quick to follow up on that really quick. I did talk to a few residents in passing as far as specifically up here on 31, up between Lambert and High going towards down 31. We know we have that embankment to where residents are, it's their property line to go ahead and cut the grass on those embankments. A lot of the concern I'm getting from the residents is when they go to cut that grass or weed whack, they're literally standing on Route 31, and it's a safety concern, wondering if what we can do, I don't know if we can, some assistance, meaning like putting out cones or have them put out cones while they're doing it. I don't know what we could do, but it seems to be a concern with more than one resident that lives on there. And if you ever, when you come down this way, you'll see that a lot of them are not weed whacking and/or cutting those embankments in fear of being actually in the roadway.
Perhaps a cone would be, I would check with, I'll try to call State Highway tomorrow and see what, you know, they may have some guidelines. This isn't the only place. But for about a year and a half to two years, I mowed Kevin's, your next door neighbor's there, when he moved up to Garrett County. So I know exactly what you're talking about, because that was probably the steepest part of the entire section in there. And to mow that bank could take you 15 to 30 minutes, depending on the amount of traffic coming. So I know exactly what you're talking about, whether a cone is a safety feature, would give them too much confidence or something, you know, but hopefully State Highway has some guidelines that I can check with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Huffman, Public Works.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Public Works, as usual, has been very busy. They've completed three yard waste pickups, and each time they filled three dumpsters. So that's quite a lot. Maybe this can be attributed to it being spring, or maybe more folks being home, but whatever the reason, there is certainly an increase for this service going on right now. They have also performed general town cleanup. They've done some various grading projects, also picked up some sticks and trimmed limbs around town. They've had an issue with our new brush hog mower. It's a warranty repair that they're taking care of. And they are also working a concern with the Blue Ridge Stormwater Pond, some of the road access and some repairs possibly to the pond collecting water. So they have taken, they're working to take care of the road themselves, and they're going to talk to the county to take care of the stormwater pond. And lastly, the planning commission did not meet in April.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure people spending more time at home are doing a little bit more yard work. But hey, if it makes the town look a little bit better, so be it. But thank you. Any questions for Councilman Huffman? Water and Sewer, Councilman Pauls Grove.
Good evening, everyone. Have a report here from our Public Works Department. Wayne and Alan have been very busy here. They're kind of doing double duty between Public Works and mowing and stuff and water and sewer issues. But Wayne shares that they're looking into the repairs of a leak at Main and High Streets, and just the last day or two, engaged the services of a company out of Pennsylvania that does precision leak detection. And it was money very well spent because they were able to pinpoint exactly where the leak is. So when it comes time to actually dig up and do the work, they'll dig right to it without having to do a lot of exploring. And while they were in town, they also checked over a lot of other things and found one other leak that is not obvious yet. It's not surfacing to the ground, but it's down at the service lateral into 7-Eleven. So that one will need to be taken care of at some point, too. They did not find any other leaks around town, which is actually good news. But Wayne feels like this new contact that they made with this company to do this leak detection is money very well spent. And again, it'll prevent us doing half a lot of digging, looking for leaks. They're also looking at the sledge tank repairs. Wayne's come up with some cost estimates on that, and we'll be moving ahead with that pretty soon. And also exploring the possibility of bringing well number two at Hillside, bringing it back online. But before we do that, there's got to be some repairs made. There's probably a leak in the pipe down in the well casing. Do have an estimate to pull that well out and explore it. The estimate's $2,000 just to explore it and diagnose. It doesn't include any repairs, but we'll be looking further ahead for that. The last thing we had to share is that we're still experiencing a lot of wipes entering the Atty Ridge pump station. So need to stress again that even though the wipes and other things say flushable, they're not good for our system, for the pumps and anything else. So please, nothing down the toilet except what we know is supposed to be in there. Mayor, if it's possible, I did some exploring. I don't know if any of you have seen this dirt that's being hauled into town to the wastewater treatment or to the old lagoon site. If you haven't seen them offloading the dirt off of the rail cars down there, it's a pretty interesting operation.
Very.
I was curious as to where the dirt was coming from. And so a couple days ago, I was in town. Actually, I was shopping for groceries, so it was officially out. Took a swing by Green Street and then Westminster Avenue where they're building the new stormwater retention pond. They weren't actually working there at the time, but I took a few pictures. And I have a few pictures of the site down here in New Windsor where they're offloading. So at some point, maybe later on in the meeting, if we have time, if you can open it up so that I can do some sharing, I'll show some pictures, but only if we have time.
And I think Gary's taken a video of it.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting process. Very interesting.
And the reason why that's being brought in by rail, I think the Blue Ridge Stormwater Management Project was like 1,700 truckloads or something like that. I can't remember. But this would have been about 10,000 or 10 times that many. So our roads would have been pretty nasty shape probably by the time they got done. So that's why it's coming in by rail and staying off our roads. When this is done, hopefully by the end of the fall, we'll have a site ready for construction development of a park. So, which, funding is always going to be a key issue, and right now it's, it's a premium. So we'll have to do what we can to get funding for it. Ed, on that leak, I know that the guy that came down, Gary has said that he's highly reputable and does an outstanding job during our meetings with the mayors. One of the municipalities, I'll verify again with them tomorrow evening, but they have a, I guess, a machine and two guys would come over and do it for nothing in the future if we so choose to go that, that direction. So we're coordinating efforts with other municipalities. So one good thing that's coming out of this, I guess, if you will, with that project. Any questions for Councilman Pauls Grove? Public Safety, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I don't have much, just, I want to just reaffirm what I, what I said previously. Your public safety people are up to speed. They're not, you're not, you're not going to miss out on any, any public safety issues with your fire and your police. I've been assured by everybody I spoke to that they're at full staffing. Their, their people are working very hard. Some calls, some types of calls for service are up a little bit, some are down. They are getting, you know, a lot of calls for, you know, they'll come out as suspicious activities or whatever, and it turns out to be it's people that are in violation of the stay-at-home orders. So don't make, don't make any more work for these, these people. You know, they got enough to do, enough to worry about. They're at the front line of all this. And, and so, you know, don't make it any harder for them. As far as all your different public safety people, like I said, fire, fire department, police department, even your road crews, animal control, we are seeing an influx of wildlife complaints with animal control. And that's not something typically that animal control's supposed to handle. It's supposed to be Department of Natural Resources, but that's not happening. We are seeing an influx of wildlife, wildlife complaints. A lot of that has to do with the fact that there's not a whole lot of humans out there to scare them off. So they're becoming a little bit more brave and taking back their, their domain. For the most part, they're healthy. If they're healthy, leave them alone. Don't believe the myths about, you know, if you see a raccoon in the daytime, it means it's got rabies. That's absolutely not true. It could be an indicator, but it's, it's not necessarily true. We're seeing a lot more deer on the road, so be aware of that when you're driving. I've noticed personally, because my job puts me on the road quite often, I guess people are under the assumption that the police departments are no longer taking proactive traffic enforcement. So they're taking advantage of that. I've seen people at speeds that are just absolutely astronomical and ridiculous. So again, don't make it any harder for our first responders by, by driving like that. But with that being said, also, with the, with the influx of the wildlife on the road, that could cause a safety hazard, not only for you, but for other people as well. So I guess in general, I'm just saying, you know, do what you're supposed to do. Don't make it any harder for our first responders and our people that, that have to put their lives on the line to protect us. And you certainly don't want to put any more burden on the hospitals and the medical care staff that, that we have. And other than that, I believe I will defer the monthly report to our very capable deputy who has been handling all kinds of stuff, including cows that are running at large. I was on, I had the pleasure of being with, with that deputy today and getting a cow back in a field. So, but I'll defer the rest of the report to him, and I just wish everybody the best of luck and health and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Any questions for Councilman Smith? Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to second the mayor's remarks encouraging everyone to support our local businesses. I've been staying in touch with them, continuing to share information about stimulus money. The most recent thing, there's some monies available through a group called the Core Cares Foundation, which is offering grants to Maryland restaurants, and I sent that information to the restaurants. I'm disappointed, and I don't know if the mayor sort of anything new, but I'm disappointed because from what I've heard so far, despite, you know, filing the applications, none of our businesses have been successful in getting any of the stimulus or state money. So I hope that changes in this next round. I also spoke with the owners of the Seasons That Magnolia, which is our event venue and bed and breakfast center. First, they're pretty much shut down, and they have not been able to get any of the funding either. And also, they were vandalized this week. She did a report to the sheriff. They certainly don't need that on top of not having any business. So it's an important time for us to all support our local businesses and keep them going until things are better. That's all I have. I did have just a question for you, mayor. I noticed that the Food Bank is reopened at the Methodist Church.
Yes.
How can people get donations to the Food Bank? Would you just come when it was open?
Send me a text, email, email me at nrope@new windsornd.org. I'll, I'll make sure that Dale Lohman is well aware of the donation request. So.
I had a couple of people ask me because they wanted to make donations, so I said I'd follow up on that.
I appreciate it. And I know one business in town went through, NWSB Bank, not to plug them, but I know they went through them, and they had a real quick turnaround.
Oh, good.
Talking with the other mayors, I know this probably might getting, get old, but it's very helpful listening to the other mayors. And it depends on the bank. Some banks are extremely, were extremely well prepared. Some were caught off guard. So those that were prepared, I think, saw a quick turnaround. So they may want to check with other banks, and it may be too late in the process. I don't know, but.
Well, they're supposed to be coming out with a second round of money, so that's good to know for round two.
Yeah. So, and, and WSB Bank is not the only one, but I know there was a success story there. So.
Okay.
Just help. They are, they are our local bank, so.
Right, right. Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for Councilman, Councilwoman Schultz? Community Deputy, Mark, or Brian, I'll share your report if you'd like.
I can do it. It's up to you.
There we are. How's that?
Looks good. The Sheriff's Office, between April 1st to April 30th, responded to 47 calls for service within town limits. Out of those calls, only two required reports were from the following. On October, or, excuse me, on April 5th, at approximately 8:25 PM, deputies responded to the 100 block of Main Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that known parties got into a verbal argument that turned physical, and the victim was referred to the District Court Commissioner's Office, where they eventually did file charges in reference to this case. Case remains open pending the paperwork. On April 30th, at approximately 8:37 AM, deputies responded to the 100 block of Church Street in reference to a theft investigation revealed that known party had stolen cash and medications from the residents before leaving. Case remains open. And I see there is a little typo there. But other than that, that's all I got to report.
Any questions? Brian, all I can say is thank you for what you're doing and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody here from West Carroll Rep Council. Fire Chief. Les, I will bring up his report. Chief's report. He's more than welcome to read it, but if I don't hear anything, I'll go ahead and read it. Thank you, Byron, for giving the report. Chief's report. Calls for the month, 14 fire calls, 48 EMS calls. Year to date, 98 fire calls, 189 EMS calls. We are diligently working on keeping ourselves and the public protected from giving or getting COVID while on calls or in our encounters. We would like to thank and recognize Dave Ko for managing not only the EMS response from New Windsor Fire Department, but at the county level as the chairperson of the County EMS Operations Committee. Dave has been in constant contact with the state, keeping up to date on the latest procedures for handling COVID patients, to personal protective equipment, to disinfecting procedures, and relaying this information to the county fire department, all the while maintaining his full-time job as an EMS officer with the Frederick County Department of Fire and Rescue Services. Dave has spent many sleepless nights updating situation reports, assisting with the situation in many of the county nursing homes from an emergency medical services standpoint. Remember that our first priority is the citizens of New Windsor and general vicinity. If you have any questions, feel free to call or email personnel at the station. Byron, on behalf of the town. Byron, on behalf of the town council and staff, we thank you and, and everybody at the fire hall for what they're doing, putting their, their lives at risk and their health at risk. So thank you, Byron. Pass that on, please. Town Manager's Report.
You gonna bring it up, Neil?
Yep.
I'll get started. Good evening, everybody. Just a few things I want to reiterate and also mention. The Town Hall Public Works staff scheduling, we, Town of New Windsor staff continue to follow the governor's, Governor Hogan's mandates and do our part to help control the spread of COVID-19 while maintaining basic levels of service and operations. Town Hall Public Works will remain closed to the public until further notice. Town staff have been working modified schedules for the last month, and it's going well. The, the schedules are as follows. The Town Clerk Treasurer will be in the office Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 7:30 to 4:00. The Secretary Receptionist will be in the office Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:00 to 3:00. There are two Public Works staff will both be working Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, and from 7:30 to 4:00. And the Director, Wayne Myers, is, will be off on Fridays, and Alan, our maintenance position, will be off on Mondays. Town Manager will be working in Town Hall Office Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 7:30 to 4:00, and from Mondays and Fridays from 7:30 to 4:00. Someone is always available to take calls Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 3:00. Calls to Town Hall on Tuesdays and Wednesdays are being forwarded to Secretary Receptionist via cell phone, the town cell phone. And then Clerk Treasurers handle and answering the calls on Fridays from 9:00 to 3:00. And then messages for any of the town staff will be forwarded to the appropriate person during regular business hours and also after hours as soon as possible. So just an update on that. Ed, Councilman Paul's Grove mentioned, we did some leak detection with a company called FPS. It's Fluid Pinpointing Services. There, they do leak detection for cities, boroughs, towns, and contractors in our area. They're a small one to two-person company located in Lebanon, PA. Bob Junkins with Mid-Atlantic Utilities preferred FPS to Wayne and myself. And Bob does speak very highly of, of FPS and has used them on several occasions in Frederick and other municipalities around our area. The owner is Greg Glimowski. He has 32 years of experience with water line detection, surveys, and utility locating. So Wayne contacted the owner about doing some work for us and what the cost would be. He basically charges $215 an hour, which includes his travel and all his equipment, which is very high-tech, very detailed and high-tech equipment. He estimated it would be 10 hours as a worst-case scenario. So what, what Wayne did ahead of time was provide Greg with our water distribution aerial maps, so he had an idea of where things were, and his schedule was open and flexible, and was actually able to, to do the work yesterday in town. So Wayne had some locations that he suspected there might possibly be some leaks. So Wayne assisted Greg with checking these areas, and then also Greg was able to get to know the town's water system. He ended up spending eight hours and basically did, was able to check the entire water system. So that was, that was really good. And the good news is they only found two leaks. We, we thought it might be more. As again, Ed mentioned, the one leak is at Main Street near the intersection with High Street in front of the 201 Park. And Wayne pointed out how many houses and buildings will be, need to be shut down temporarily during repairs. And Mid-Atlantic Utilities is preparing an estimate for that work, and Wayne and I are going to meet with, with Mid-Atlantic to develop and schedule a plan moving forward. And as mentioned, the other leak is on the private lateral side for 7-Eleven. 7-Eleven's meter is located inside the building, which is not really accessible at all for, for our staff. So this is a good opportunity to move the meter outside to a vault location, which is preferred by myself and Public Works. So we're working with 7-Eleven. The town, we decided that the town will provide the meter vault, the piping, and the meter itself, and then have the plumbing contractor for 7-Eleven do the work for us. So that, that's, Wayne's been coordinating that and sent them a letter, and we've had a response back from them. So that's, that's moving along as well. It's a pretty, pretty significant leak, and it's, their, their water bill's been high, so it's everything running through the, through their meter. So Wayne and I felt that hiring FPS for the day was a, was a good opportunity. Money well spent, and will save money and time in the future with Mid-Atlantic doing the repairs. They're not going to be looking for data round for the leaks. They're, they're pretty, pretty well pinpointed, usually within a foot. So I think that was a good, a good opportunity. And, and Neil, if you get some information on, on the, the other municipality, let me know that as well, so we can, you think about that in the future. The MML Summer Conference, you've all most likely heard that the MML Summer Conference is going virtual. The dates still are, are the same, except it's condensed to two days, June 29th and 30th. And they're expecting the schedule to be out soon. Donna sent you all an email this morning requesting you respond individually to MML with your answer to either option one or two, and copy Donna, so we know how much refund to expect to get. Option one is basically to transfer your registration to the virtual event and, and then refund the remaining cost. And then option two is to cancel your registration, refund the full amount. So go ahead and take care of that yourselves. You know your schedule's better than, than we do.
I'm going to have to take a look at the agenda, see what is on there before, you know, I, well, not it's worth $95. I'm guessing some of that goes towards the keynote speaker. I, I don't know. I can check, check with Perry and Chris Nevin tomorrow night where that, maybe it's, maybe it'll be well spent. But right now, you know, everything online is without, without a cost. But like I say, maybe it's the keynote speaker, and maybe, maybe it's worth it. I want to take a look at the agenda first myself.
Yeah, and if you find out, find out that agenda, let me know. I just, I've been reading the emails from MML, and they're saying soon, but no, no dates, but it would have to come out pretty soon, I would imagine. So.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with the mayor. I'm not really interested in going until I know what, what, what they'd be offering. So I hope they're going to tell us before they expect us to make up our minds.
Yeah.
So, okay. Then you mentioned the Lagoon Project. It's going well. It is a very interesting process. They basically are at one local contractor, HCI, is doing the excavation in Westminster, loading it onto the rail, and then it's being brought by rail to New Windsor. And then another local contractor, Stanballs, is unloading there and spreading around, doing the compaction there. The, the work, the railroad is also involved, and it's, it's there. That you see, delicately balanced along the top of the, of the rail cars. Bring one, sometimes two, planes to, to town each day, usually about 8:00, 7:30, 8:00 in the morning, the first one gets there. And there's basically 10 cars. One carries the, one carries the loader, and then the others are full of the, with the dirt. And then basically each, nine cars with dirt equate to about 50 of the large Tarek-type dumps. So your point was well taken, that it's definitely a savings on our road. Without, if we had had all those trucks coming through, through town, they would have definitely had a negative impact on, on the, on our road. So it's, it's going well. There's, there's a lot, it's a lot of dirt. I don't remember the exact cubic yards. I think it was 70,000, somewhere in that range of cubic yards. So they have to do it in lifts. They bring it in, you know, spread it out, compact it, and then test it, and then bring it up in, in certain, usually eight to 10-inch lifts. So it's interesting. It's something, if you need, if you want to go down and check out, it's worth, worth seeing. I have not seen the, the new pond in, in Westminster yet, but I'd like to see that as well. So that is all I have for my report.
Any questions for Gary? Two things, Gary. One, is this dirt of quality that we would want a little extra for stockpile?
Yeah, it's good. It's, it's good quality. It's good quality dirt from what I've seen. I mean, I'm not a soil scientist. You mean for a downy gear you're talking about?
Anywhere. I mean, just to have it in case we need it for another project or fill in somewhere.
Yeah.
Just to have it, you know, one car load or something.
Yeah, I mean, a load or two would, would go a long way, really. So we have the room to store it down there.
Right.
And I can talk to, to Ryan or Dwayne with, with Stanballs about that.
And then the other thing, I've been talking to Gary and Wayne both about the project at the 201 Main Street with the water leak. While they're digging up, and Gary can explain a little bit more in detail, but basically take care of bringing water into the lot itself for our future water use for the park. So while we have it torn up, we'll just go ahead and have that. I told Wayne to keep track of the hours and the labor and everything and materials in case we can use some of our program open space for that, because it's going to be helping our park, which we would have to have done anyway.
Yeah, the, the frontage of, of the park is not long at all in, in relation to where the, we think the leak is. They're going to have to close down that corner of the road to do the work. And while they're in there, they could probably do it almost in the same trench if it all works out and run the lateral while they're in there repairing, repairing. We believe the, the leak is on the main, not the existing lateral. We thought the existing lateral to the, to the fountain, to the old fountain was what was leaking, but we believe it's the main there. So, but it's all within that, you know, a small frontage of, of the park. Makes sense to do, do the work while they're there.
All right. Thank you. Treasurers' Report. Donna, I'll bring it up if you'd like.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So balances as of April 30th. I'll wait till the mayor gets.
There we are.
Okay. General Fund balance is $401,557.49. General Fund capital budget, $221,664.40. The Enterprise Fund, $480,741.20. Enterprise Capital Reserve and Three Rs, $148,699.35. Developer fees, $658,894.80. And the Money Market Fund at $27,821.45. We have 12 properties for sale and one in a foreclosure. And one note on the properties for sale, majority of those are at either Sneed or Summit or Union Square, so they're, they're newer properties. Which brings me to the water sewer, and everyone should have gotten their bills because they were mailed out on April 3rd. And a discussion that the council had had on the COVID-19 situation, they had discussed the possibility of a bill adjustment for those that are having financial difficulty paying. At the request of the council, I was asked to monitor the number of requests coming in from residents for special payment arrangements due to this situation for a 30-day period. And as of yesterday, there were only three requests initiated by the residents, which I have addressed all of those and worked out the arrangement. I will continue to monitor the remaining 60 days left in the quarterly billing payment period and report back each month to the council in May and June.
Any questions for Donna? Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Don't Think Lehigh Report. Any old business? New business, fiscal year 21 budget discussion and introduction.
Which one you want me to bring up, Gary?
I would just bring up the, the summary that I sent last week.
All right.
It's an Excel spreadsheet summary that was, you all requested I do. If you can find that one. I'll go ahead and get started.
Go ahead.
Since, since the beginning of the FY21 budget process and, and preparation at the end of, started back at the end of January, early February, I've run upwards of 15 different versions of this, of the town's budget. It's been a difficult, challenging process this year for obvious reasons. At the April 20th Work Session Meeting at the direction of the council and in response to potential impacts to revenues and budget planning in general related to COVID-19 crisis, I presented two more conservative options. It was 3A and 3A1.
Is that the one?
That's 3A. Yeah, that was, that's, that's 3A. That was one of the ones there, yeah.
Okay.
There was apprehensive and uncertainly rightfully introducing either option by council. Both versions included hiring a new full-time Public Works Maintenance Worker and promoting Alan Toberry to Supervisor. Option 3A1 had raises for the rest of the staff, and option 3A not. So at the direction of the council, also, I was asked to run a comparison, excuse me, of the key budget line items in the general and enterprise fund sections of the budget that impacted capital project budget line items when various options are applied. So this was done via this spreadsheet. Do you not have that spreadsheet, Neil?
Which one?
The, the, the comparison of the four options. I sent that.
Somewhere.
I, I sent that out last Wednesday for review, so hopefully you all have had some time to review that and wanted to get it out of.
3A?
No, it's not, it's not, it's not one of the budgets. It's a spreadsheet comparison. It's just like a half, half of a sheet. Yeah, Dave's got it there, or Ed's got it, sorry.
Yeah. There we are.
Okay, got it? Yeah, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. So what we got there, the conservative budget option, option comparison, it looked at four, four budget options, okay? 3A1, 3A, then there's 3A2 COLA, and then four. The description of the four options are as follows, what's, what they include. Like I said, 3A1 is new Public Works position, and Alan Toberry to AT is Alan Toberry to Supervisor, and then original proposed raises for the other staff. That's 3A1. 3A is the same for Public Works and Alan, and no raises for staff. And then I did a, of, of, what is 3A2, which is no new Public Works position, and Alan remains as maintenance worker, and then cost of living. raises for, for all staff. And then option four, uh, was no public works positions and no raises for staff, for any, for any staff. Um, the key line items, uh, that you see there, there's a, there's a total for each of the options. Um, the key items for the general fund include executive salaries, public work salaries, um, keeping the New Windsor Fire Company contribution, uh, at twenty. I put all the versions that you, there uh, has that contribution back to twenty thousand. And then, uh, also healthcare benefit and retirement plan, uh, portions of, of the, for the staff. The, um, the key line items in the enterprise fund um, include executive salaries, public work salaries, healthcare benefit and retirement plan. Those totals that you see there, uh, for three A one under general fund, two hundred and one thousand six eighty two, those, those totals, uh, include those, uh, line, various line items. It's down in the one forty one, five eighty nine under enterprise. And then you have in each option, the, um, the capital project budget line item, which is, uh, goes towards any of the, any of our capital projects on the general side. And then, um, down below you see capital project for water and sewer. Um, so those numbers are equally split between the water and sewer for capital projects. So if you can see in the different options, um, I put, uh, a, the, the, the difference, I'm up under the general fund, the difference there, the forty eight twenty five is the difference between option three A and three A one. And if you go over to three A two, or yeah, three A two COLA, the difference increases to thirty five. And then there's a cumulative difference below that for as you go to the, from left to right on the chart. Same thing down below on the enterprise. We're all, the big, obviously the big jump, the big change there is, which is basically increases the capital project line item, budget line items, is when you go to, uh, when you're eliminating the, the public works positions. Um, after that, that, the, the changes are not as significant as you can see.
Everybody saw, uh, public work directors, uh, letter?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
That I, Wayne did that at my, uh, direction. Uh, we've been talking a lot about just planning in general and budget in general. And, um, I thought it was good to, um, to have Wayne put a letter together, uh, to you all. Um, he also, um, did a, a list of basically his current responsibilities and then also future goals and things he wants to, to accomplish. I believe that was sent out. I've sent out a lot of things here, uh, lately, but I'm not. Did, did the council get that list of, of, uh, Wayne's responsibilities?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I got it.
I think that just kind of helps you. And believe me, that's only scratching the surface. He could have probably wrote three or four pages if he really wanted to. Um, but it's just, uh, gives you all an idea of the, just the variety of, and, and, and coverage of things that, that, that they're doing in public works now. So, um, and uh, Neil has, has copies of all the four, uh, options, um, uh, that we're discussing tonight. Um, I didn't, um, if you, you know, it's, it's kind of detailed to bring them all up and go through things. I think the, 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 the spreadsheet that highlights everything, um, all, all the, all the, um, the, uh, revenues in the general fund and enterprise are all the same. What changes is, is those, those line items that I, that we talked about. Um, the executive salaries, the public work salaries, uh, the, the other change was in the general side was the, uh, fire department contribution and then the healthcare benefit retirement plan. Those are the main, the main line, line items that change in a different scenarios. The, the, the revenues and, and expenditures for the most part, uh, and the rest of the budgets, uh, budget option stays, stays the same for, for. So, um.
If you'd like a recommendation?
Well, Gary, I have a, a, what? Go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, I have, I have a question. Um, I don't recall in these budget options what we had done with the, um, town admin clerical position. It was that full time in all of those?
No, that, that has, um, in all these options you see here, um, that is not in the mix. Um, what we're going to still do is, um, Kalina's, uh, time and hours will stay the same, but she'll still continue uh, working with Donna and, and, and learn basically training as the, as the billing clerk. Uh, but it's not, it does not include, uh, uh, her going to full time, um, in, in any of these scenarios. Uh, does, has she been made aware of that? Does she still desire to go full time? Yeah, I, I've, I've spoke with Kalina several times back when I started the, the whole restructuring and a couple of months ago and and she was, she was very open and, and, uh, looking to, looking to do that. Uh, she also understands that we're, you know, we're trying to, uh, get a budget that, um, it's co- uh, collectively comfortable with and, and recommending for adoption and to answer your question, yes, but she's understanding as well. Thank you.
Gary, I would also remind us that, uh, thinking your very first budget, we had the position of a code enforcement officer, and that's been taken out of all of these, correct?
Yes. It's out as well right now. So we pretty much scaled it back, um, um, you know, to a, to these options, um, and still, still working with my emphasis, and I mentioned this last time, was, is the, is the, I think the priority is the public works position. And, um, and, and with, with that, Alan moving to supervisor. And then freeing Wayne up to do, to do more of the, the, uh, director's, uh, position and, and working um, more focused on water and sewer.
So Gary, this is Terry, real quick. And, and I thank Wayne. I read his letters. It was, it was, um, very good and very informative for me as well. Um, so looking at it, um, I, I'm trying to distinguish, um, Wayne in his current role as far as like the water and sewer, is he um, overseeing the operation as far as like our vendors? Because to my knowledge, um, Maryland Department Environment is the ones that actually do all the um, physical labor and other services needed on the water and sewers as well. I, I'm just wondering if we free him up by hiring a new person. What, what other roles does that in, um, as far as water and sewer goes? Cause my understanding, Jack did a lot of consulting, but didn't do any real physical aspects of it. Just wondering, are we trying to get away from using as much as vendor availability and saving costs there or um, by hiring somebody new and, and moving Wayne away from those other duties? I, I, I'm just, that's where it kind of gets a little gray for me.
Right, sure. Um, let me, let me go back to the beginning. Um, I think you, you mentioned MDE. I think you meant to say MES. There are two, there are two agencies very closely related. M E, Maryland Department Environment is the regulatory agency. MES is Maryland Environmental Service. They, they operate the town's water and wastewater system. And they're, they're, they're in, uh, they have a section in our budget and it's incorporated in there every year. But in terms of all the, all, all the, um, ordering of chemicals and, uh, equipment and things like that, Wayne, Wayne's doing that in very close, um, coordination and daily, um, uh, meetings, so to speak, and just working with MES. But would, they basically, um, Wayne is handling that. Wayne does that.
Wayne would like to speak.
Go ahead.
Wayne? Do you have your computer speaker on? We can come back to Wayne if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, um, I think, um.
Come back, Wayne, come back.
Jack did a lot of consulting, um, and especially towards the end, end of his career, the, 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 you know, the physical side of actually doing things was, was, he was not able to do. Um, whereas, you know, Wayne and Wayne is, is capable of doing that and is learning a lot of those things and is doing a lot of, of, of things that we would, we would typically have to hire contractors to do. Uh, obviously there's, there's things that, that we still have to hire contractors for, depending on the, the, uh, involvement and, and and level of what, what we're doing at, say, pump stations or things like that. But Wayne, you want, you, you mic'd up now?
Can't hear you.
Got. Still got to turn your mic on. So, um, did I answer your question, Terry? I mean, I was.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. As you did. Thanks.
Okay.
Maybe Wayne can call in on his phone.
Good.
Or type something.
Um, I'll just interject here and probably just to underscore some of what's, what's actually been shared, but, um, I, I would fully recommend us to go ahead and fund the, uh, new position in public works. And the two things that I guess provide rationale for that, number one is, is that we've needed to replace some functionality in what we have lost, uh, with Jack Coase uh, no longer on the scene for us here. And the other thing is, like has been said, uh, Wayne and our, our public works department is taking a lot more, taking on a lot more in-house work, uh, making repairs and such that we may have had to hire out in the past. Um, and I see that only growing. Um, they took care of a leak out at Denning's Road well, a month or two ago, or which may have in the past been hired out. Uh, anytime they can do those kinds of things, uh, there's significant cost savings for us. Uh, but that means we have to have the staff in place. So, um, just for the sake of moving this along, I would encourage us to consider either option three A one or three A at this point. Just add that to the discussion.
Thank you. Wayne, you're on if you can speak. Wayne? No.
Isn't technology.
Can you, can you call in on the, on your phone? Are you on your phone?
Tell him to hang up and call you. You'll put him on speakerphone.
Yeah, call me, Wayne, if you want.
The o- the other thing too that I'd like to add is, is, is not only in the, in the water and sewer side of things expanding, um, just in, just the general responsibilities, um, uh, of, of public works on the, on the, I'll call it the general side, um, with, with Sneed or Summit coming on. Um, you know, we've got more roads to do, um, more meters, just more, more of, more of everything. And just, you know, the, the, the amount of things that, that public works does these days in, in, in the last couple of years has increased significantly from when Wayne started, you know? Uh, I think he's going on ten years, um, back. It's, it's, it's a, a different dynamic today. I think there's, um, there's citizens by nature and, and rightfully so, require or expect a, a, a level of service of that, that the town, for the town to provide and, and that, that level of service um, as the town grows is, is, um, gets more and more difficult to do with, with the two people. So.
Gary, I have, uh, Wayne on speakerphone. Hopefully with two devices, it doesn't, uh, mess up the, the audio, but, uh, you want, want to let Wayne?
Sure, give it a shot.
Go ahead, Wayne. Hopefully everybody.
Okay, I hope everybody can hear me. I was having issues with my privacy setting on my microphone. But, uh, I'd just like to, to say that, um, I see the public works department heading in a direction of being kind of more independent and able to do a lot more in-house stuff. And currently, uh, Alan and myself, we're, we're working towards that, that goal right now. Um, we've been able to do a lot of in-house repairs where typically we would have called a contractor or subbed it out. Um, there's also a lot of maintenance things that, that, that have to, uh, happen. We have a lot of maintenance and, and stuff at some of our water stations and um, sewer stations. And, um, we, we just have an extremely, uh, large workload. Uh, and it's, and it's only increasing more with the restrictions, uh, that we have in, in regards to, or not restrictions, the, the, uh, the guidelines that we have for stormwater management and the extra additional responsibilities of that. And, um, I mean, the guidelines are getting stricter on the town in regards to a lot of things. And I just feel like, uh, we can do a lot more in-house repairs and, and, and service to our, to our stuff and save, save money.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you for what you and Alan are doing right now.
All right, thank you.
And if you want to stay on the, on the phone, that's, you're more than welcome.
Okay, I'll, I'll call back in.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Bye.
Thanks, Wayne.
Hi, Rain.
So yeah, I'm, I'm basically, you know, collectively you all be comfortable with, with what option we use uh, for the FY twenty one budget and, uh, and agree on a budget to introduce. You know, I need direction from the council as to what option we want to go with. Um, you know, we're, we're coming to the end of the, the budget season. Uh, once we introduce a budget, um, hopefully tonight, but, um, then we have advertise in the newspaper uh, for two weeks prior to the budget hearing. Um, so even, even if we introduced tonight, um, we couldn't, we couldn't have the, the adoption at the, um, May work session, but we can, we could, would have time to do it at the, at the June council meeting, which I have um, on as a, another item to talk about the June council meeting. So, um, you know, we have, we have time, but we're getting to the end of that, of that budget, um, that budget time and, and with uh, doing our requirements of advertising and, and holding the hearing and, and, uh, and adoption and everything there. So.
Well, Gary, my recommendation to the council and, um, you know, it's more than open for comment, but, uh, I, I prefer that we, that you introduce, um, three A one, uh, with the new, um, public works position and Alan going to supervisor and raises for our staff. Um, they are still doing a tremendous job even in these situations, and sometimes it might be even a little bit more stressful um, in these situations. So that's my recommendation to the council.
Okay.
Council, do I hear a motion to, uh, introduce a budget?
So.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to introduce budget option three A one.
But before we get to that, is.
Wait a minute, I need a motion, or I need a second before we go to discussion.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Huffman, seconded by Councilman Paulsgrove, to introduce, uh, option, budget option three A one. Now, comments or questions?
Yes, I have a comment. So talking with Michelle last time, we had this discussion that, that the budget could be amendable at any point in time. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't know what funding could possibly be pulled from us at the state level. We're going to be at a two point nine billion dollar. We're going to be at a $2.9 billion deficit when this is all said and done with the state level. Hiring freezes are across the state. As a local municipality, a small municipality, I understand the need to have new positions, I, I really do, but I just can't see us adding something new at this point when there's so much uncertainty in the middle of a pandemic. I, I just don't know what the message sends saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and give new positions and raises and we don't know if our budget's going to be cut through various state fundings that we may get or what other revenue shortfalls we'd have at this time. I appreciate the staff. I think they do a phenomenal job for this community, for our residents. They do a phenomenal job. I tell everybody, especially during snow season, how phenomenal they do with the snow removal. I would love to give them raises. I would love to go ahead and add new positions, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. The state government is going to see a $2.9 billion shortfall. I'm concerned about where other revenue sources that we get from the state could possibly be impacted. On top of that, we're talking about two potential leaks that need to be fixed and a sledge tank that needs to be repaired.
Sludge.
Don't see us adding that at this point when it could be amended at a later date when we can find out where we are at a different point in time. Thank you.
Well, to answer those, a couple of concerns, one, our majority, our biggest revenue from the state is property taxes and that's not going away. The one unknown is the income tax. Donna, am I correct? That could be affected probably the most, but it's not the biggest portion of our budget. The enterprise projects, the sledge tank, I believe is under warranty, correct?
Correct.
So that's under warranty, so that's not an expense. And then the other projects, the water leaks, one might be partially paid for by Program Open Space, but then the other one, our, thank goodness, our enterprise fund is very healthy.
Very solid. One thing I do want, sorry, Ed, one thing I want to comment on, on what Neil just said there, the, the sledge tank, the, the, the surface is covered under warranty, there will be, there will be costs to set up, uh, cost to the town to set up a temporary holding tank and, and piping and that kind of thing. So there is, there is some.
Right.
Even though the product itself is under warranty.
Okay, so, so I, I want to, I want to reiterate some, some things that everybody seems to agree on. First of all, I believe that our staff absolutely deserve a raise. I do agree that we, we probably do need a position at Public Works and want to trust the people that, that know better than I, but I believe that that's probably the case. But with all that being said, and knowing the fact that we can adjust this at, at any given time, I just cannot support an idea of hiring an additional employee and, and providing pay raises at this point. I just can't. And I hope the staff understands that. It's not a vote against them. It's just, it's just, I just don't believe that this is the time that we can, that we should be doing that. I just don't, for reasons that Councilman Green has stated and, and the appearances, it's just, it's just, I, I just, I just cannot support that, that idea of, of, of increasing spending at a time when everybody else seems to either be putting on a freeze or decreasing it. I just, I, I just can't, I just can't, I can't do that at this time. I certainly do think that there is a need for it. I do, I absolutely believe that people deserve it. I just can't, I, I can't vote for that. And then, and then one of the smallest ideas was to increase Kalina up to full-time and that's, that's off the table. I just, I mean, I, I don't understand it. I'd certainly support the idea of taking her full-time and I'd certainly support the idea of raising everybody's salaries and, and increasing the public works numbers and promotions at the proper time. I just don't believe now is the proper time. That's just my belief. Thank you.
Well, the one thing with Kalina bumping her up to more responsibility, and Donna, you can correct me, but you would have to be working closely with her, teaching her some things, training her in some ways, and maybe at this time it's not an ideal situation to be that close together in, in one, one office. So that I could see holding off, you know, for a while.
That's a, that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. I, I never thought of that. That's a good point.
I, I will say that she is doing things that we had already had a chance to start training on and I will continue to let her do that because the more she does it, of course, the more she's going to be able to take that portion of it over. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that I'm not comfortable working in that much of a close proximity right now because of circumstances and Kalina and I have spoken about this situation and as Town Manager Di said, she, she fully understands that at some point, you know, it may go to full-time for her and in, in no way has, have any of these decisions throughout the budget process been made for her that is because we don't want to do it, you know? She, she fully understands that.
And not that we have to do like anyone else, but the other mayors, I believe they're all, the majority, I think, that I remember getting a, a response back from were, were giving a two, two and a half percent increase to their employees, more of a cost of living increase.
Which if I, if I can add, any, the COLA option 3A2, that COLA is all, what works out percentage-wise to be right around two and a half percent, very slightly depending upon the person, but it's, for the most part, it's right at, right around two and a half percent.
Gary, can I, I have a question. I remember back when we, when we met, I think it was February, I don't know, you know, the days are all rushed together. We were back, we were still meeting in person and, and a significant portion of, of some of the salary changes, including the new positions, were funded by the fact that we, that we had in fact lost Jack and lost his position. Isn't that part of, I remember going over some numbers that covered quite a bit of this. Is, is that not true?
Jack's position and then one part-time Public Works employee that's not working with us right now. So those two, those two really, I, I won't say cover 100% of it, but a good portion of it.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought. So it's not like we're taking money that wasn't already in the salary line to fund what we're doing. Most of it already was in salaries, we're just moving it around.
A good.
Gary?
A good portion of it, that's not, not all of it entirely, but a good portion of it, yes. And we still have, we still have, obviously, Jack's portion of the budget is, is not, you know, what he was, his allocated for his, his time at so many hours is, is obviously not in there.
Right.
But, and with Dave Valentine, he's our, he is our part-time person, his, his portion of the salary is still in there, but he, he has not, you know, he has not worked in probably a couple of months.
Right.
He's, you know, for whatever reason, he, there's a, there's a couple of reasons, you know, age and, and the, the, the current COVID situation and, and his health, his health situation. So that, that is still figured into all, all budget options, whichever we go with. It's, his, his line item is still in there for, for, it's basically half a year.
So Gary, could we assume then that if we did, were able to hire a, a full-time public works person and increase our staff to be full-time, that we would no longer use a part-time public work staff?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, I wouldn't say we would never use him. We might use him more along lines of like snow removal because he does, that's what we did. We used him at a capacity recently, this past, this past year, not before much and a little bit the year before, but he, he does have a, a full-size truck plow and we, we, we've used him for snow and basically as a contractor kind of situation.
That's what I was going to say, more of a contractor than an employee.
Right. But the, the need for, for having him around in terms of cutting and mowing and basic stuff like that, the, the need would, would decrease significantly if, if not, not eliminate altogether. But I would, I don't want to say eliminate altogether, but it would decrease significantly with, with, with the new position.
Okay, if I could just kind of comment, Councilmen Green and Smith, I certainly appreciate your comments on this and, yeah, it is a tough time and it, 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 um, you might be concerned about appearances in terms of what we're doing here, but when I, when I put all the pieces together here in regards to, one, we don't have a Jack Coe anymore, we would probably be using a part-time position less, and the fact that we're taking on a lot more work, to me, instead of maybe necessarily calling this a new full-time position, which it really is, we're just kind of reconfiguring our work here and the dollars that we're spending really aren't that significant. The difference, I guess I should say, really isn't that significant. And so for me, I, I think part of the rationale for me is that we've got to stay ahead of things here and I'm concerned that we might get behind the eightfold on some things if we don't have the proper staffing to take care of things that we need to.
You know, on top of that, Ed, it's a good point, if we don't have that new position, Wayne is going to have to do the work of that position and more most likely, either we get behind, like you said, or we have to hire out a contractor to come in and do work that Wayne would have had time to do.
I'd like to add something as well. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on the option 3A in terms of the, the, the raises, the, it's listed as original raises for other staff, which is what we discussed two months ago, you know, we're looking at the staff restructuring plan that we talked about. I, I should shoot myself in the head for, for another, another option, but they're, just to, to throw it out there, you know, we could, we could do the, the, the Public Works position and then do, then do COLA raises for, for the rest of the staff because the raises that are in 3A option are, are, they vary in percentage, but they are greater in, in all cases with staff than the two and a half percent COLA raise. I just wanted to point that out.
Also on the motion, you want to keep the motion?
Yes, I'll keep it, I'll keep the motion.
Okay. We have the motion by Councilman Paulsgrove, seconded by Councilman Huffman, I think it was, backwards. Okay, we still have a motion and a second. Thank you. To introduce budget option 3A1. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
The motion passes three to two. Now, Michelle, do I need to, let me see here.
She submitted a.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I believe. Do we need to do that for the?
That's for the adoption.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that'll be next.
That'll be, that'll be later.
Next, next month. Okay. All right, the June 2020 council meeting date. Well, first of all, I want to back up a little bit. No matter what everybody's stance is on, on the budget, I appreciate everybody's comments. It's not the normal time, so I can understand everybody having different opinions on this, but I do, bottom line, I think on behalf of the council, thank Gary, Donna and Wayne for doing an unbelievable amount of work on this year's, well, this coming year's budget. You had to change directions midway through when you just thought you had it. I forget, I think you're in the double digits options. So budgets usually don't please everybody, but let's remember the, the bottom goal is to provide the greatest and best services for the residents. So on behalf of everybody, thank you guys.
And, and before we move on, I'd like to thank you all. I know it's, I know I can, I certainly appreciate everybody's opinion and input. I tried my best to give as many options as, as possible. I think, I think we did that, but I want to thank you all for, for your time and, and your comments and, and, and input.
Thank you, Gary.
The June 2020 council meeting date, we had canceled the June 3rd, I think, Town Council meeting because the carnival and the parade were that night. Now that the carnival has been canceled and there's no parade, I recommend that we go back to the regular, normal meetings of first Wednesday of the month and the third Monday of the month for the work session. Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I would love to be able to say by June that everybody has to show up at Town Hall, but I don't think that's going to happen. High school graduation slash senior recognition. I sent you an email yesterday with some comments and, as my mom said, put on your thinking caps. She was my first grade teacher as well as my mom, so I heard that many times. I'm not sure if she was happy with how many times I put my thinking cap on. As we heard today, school has been closed for the year, which means there will be absolutely no graduations for, for high school students and also for college students. Now, I put some, I posted yesterday, the idea of having banners like we do, the veteran banners, whether it would be for the month of June or a 30-day period or 60-day or the whole entire summer, take them down Memorial Day or Labor Day rather, to begin the new school year. But the banners cost about a hundred dollars for the banner and for the hardware. I talked to Wayne, he's willing to be able to put them up. The military banners, the veteran banners are going up next Tuesday, weather permitting. So it takes about a two-week turnaround for the banners. I talked to Melissa at Shannon Bond Signs and that's who we've got the veteran banners from. And, you know, there's also options of yard sale signs, type signs. I know Francis Scott Key High School is going to be delivering, the, I think it was posted today, they'll be delivering those out to all the graduating seniors. My original idea was to recognize our town high school seniors, since they're not going to have a graduation. And then it's kind of just snowballed, which I, I greatly appreciate and welcome from folks outside of the town. Our veterans are not limited to just New Windsor residents and also the request has come for college students to be recognized as well. And I'm all for that. So just some thoughts, you know, there's other, been other thoughts of having a parade, you know, a certain time, you know, of cars just going by and people coming out of their houses and cheering them on, congratulating them, trying to do something a little bit for the seniors that, I know I still remember my, my graduation and I'm sure all you do too, and it's something I'll never, never forget. And unfortunately this year, that's not going to happen. So maybe the banners will take care of a little bit of that. It's not going to take everything, but I'm opening up for suggestions and it doesn't have to be decided right now, but naturally if we want to do June, we only have about a week. The, the names and the money and the posters and I think that's, that's really pushing it for town staff that's not going to be there on a regular basis like they normally are. So again, I'm thinking, you know, maybe the earliest June 15th or somewhere in between there and July and have them up maybe until the end of summer. Thoughts, everybody? Like it? Like it?
I like it.
Move forward with it? All right, anybody has any other ideas, let me know.
Mayor, town clerk here.
Yes.
How are we paying for that?
With the, the, the parents or family members, aunt, uncle, grandparents, whoever want to recognize of the graduating student.
People pay for their own?
Yeah. Now, just to.
Does the banner go back to the family?
The banner will go to the family, yes.
Okay, my, my suggestion would be maybe one large banner with names like we use for Music on the Main.
Yeah.
That we could stretch across the property on the corner that just listed everybody.
The name in the high school or the college?
Be a very minimal cost and the town could probably pick that up.
I like that idea, Donna.
How about a couple of them? One at the Beer Garden and one on Main Street Park.
Well, whatever, but the banner that we get for Music on the Main was not that terribly expensive.
No, no.
I, I think if everybody would get the names to you, I'm not sure what the cost setup would be. That would be the only thing that Kline would have to do some checking on.
Well, originally I was, you know, it's, it's hard to get numbers. Gary tried through Mary Pat to get me exact numbers of graduating high school students that live in New Windsor. And I think it was able to be broken down to the zip code, but that's still. And I'm thinking there might be five or six, there might be more than that in New Windsor. And we were going to, my suggestion would be to pay for that. You know, we're talking five, $600 or so. I, I think we can find the funds for something like that, Donna. I think that's a great idea. Maybe even two, two signs and we might even be able to find a donation for that. So.
Just a suggestion.
Well, it's a good one. And if you have any others?
Well, also, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe in the governor's announcement today, they haven't really said anything about whether or not all graduations are canceled. I know they canceled the academic school year, but I believe that he's leaving that up to local school boards and superintendents to make the decision what to do with graduation, whether to postpone them and do them in the summer or, or do some sort of graduation ceremony. So that's not, it's not completely dead in the water yet as to what they're going to do. And hopefully, I would, I would hope that they can come up with some idea to do it, even if it was a limited number of people that you have there, it would be wonderful. But yeah, I, I think we, we definitely owe it to our graduating seniors, both college and and high school to do something. So I like that idea, but let's just keep hoping out that, that there's going to be some sort of graduation for them.
Yeah. The people I've talked to, just their gut feelings, they're not speaking on behalf of the Board of Education or anything.
Right.
They just don't think anything's going to happen.
Yeah.
You know, but it'd be great if it did, if it turned around, you know, if the numbers really decreased. Maybe, but you know, to get a few thousand people into a gym, you know, it would be very, probably very limited of how many tickets were given out to every student. But, you know, when you have a class of two, 300, there's, you know, five, 600 right there off the bat. So, you know, yeah, it would be great if they had graduation for everybody. But this is an idea, you know, maybe just not for this year, but for every year from here on out. So.
And I heard the same thing, that they're leaving it up to the individual superintendents on the graduation decisions.
Well, I agree.
Neil, if you get, if you get costs on a banner, banners like Donna suggested, which I think is a good idea, maybe throw that out there on, on Facebook and other places and ask for if anyone's interested in donating. Now, I think maybe we can come up with enough donations to, to cover something like that. Just, you know, from the goodness of the town folks.
Yeah. All right, okay, next one. Sidewalk coloring contest. See if I, whoops, find that. Where are you? Shoot, can't find it. Let's see here. All right, I'm not finding that one. Sidewalk, sidewalk. Anyway. Mount Airy did back in April a sidewalk coloring contest for the kids. I think I, I sent that out to everybody, didn't I?
Yes.
I can't find it without getting out of the screen, but.
I can look in my email.
Yeah, but anyway, it was, what they did was have the kids do coloring contests on the sidewalks and then take pictures. And then they were emailed in and they were judged and they gave out prizes. I myself would be willing to do a $25 gift certificate to one of our restaurants, one of our local businesses. Councilwoman Schultz has agreed to do that. So if you're willing, you don't have to say it up here tonight, but if you're willing to do something like that, or maybe even some of the businesses may, may donate something as well for the prize. And, you know, they did theirs in April. I think they called it a summer contest. We can do it, you know, in, in June. Have some kind of contest, something like that. If everybody's on board with it, it's just something for the kids to do. Most of them are staying at home right now and hopefully that'll leave, ease up a little bit, but still have, have something for them to do. And I'm sure we could find some designated sidewalks for those that don't have a sidewalk. I'm sure something we could, you know, my house is, you know, on Church Street. I'm sure we could get a couple of people in there and still keep a six-foot distance. And it doesn't have to be done all in one day. We can do it over a two-week period or something. So any other ideas anybody might have?
Hey Neil, they, Mount Aries, they did, they had the kids do their, do the drawings and, and then take pictures of it and submit it via picture, correct? And then?
That's correct, yes.
So.
And I have one resident willing to be a judge. So she actually had come up with the idea too. And I told her, actually, Mayor Rockenberg had just sent me the flyer on that. That was one of the other things that we've been discussing, what people are doing in their communities when we meet on Zoom as, as a mayor's group. So it's been very educational. When you get eight bears, I'm not sure it's a good idea all the time. But we do, we do come up with some good ideas every now and then. So appreciate your support on that.
Can I make one quick suggestion?
Sure.
So no, no child that may want to participate is excluded because we do have areas of the town where there is no sidewalks at all. Would it be feasible for the top park, the large parking lot area, if families are practicing proper social distancing? Would those children be able to, at a particular date, go to that location and do their sidewalk chalk drawing? And take pictures and submit it or be judged? Because I do know in certain areas of the town, we do not have sidewalks. And I didn't exclude anybody just because they didn't have a sidewalk.
No, I, I said we could find designated sidewalks, you know. My house on Church Street, you know, High Street, we have the Presbyterian Church that has quite a bit. You know, I think if I talk to them, St. Paul United Methodist Church, now the one side, you know, is a little close to the curve, but, you know, you know, the Presbyterian Church would be ideal for quite a few people. And, you know, the, the artist would be recognized by traffic going by, which I think would be, be a good public relations thing too. So. Dave, he's got a lot of sidewalk down there. Kim's got a lot of sidewalk.
I've got two sides, so I'd be happy to volunteer.
Councilman Green has none, so I'll just say.
I can give you a couple sections, Terry, for real cheap price.
We, we also got the, if we need to, if we get that large of a turnout, we could, again, section it off and have certain times that the kids could go, but they could also use the basketball court or the tennis court as well.
Right.
And just section off areas and, you know, and, and have them not do it at the same time or maybe just two groups and keep the separation, keep the spacing and still, still adhere to that.
And I'm, and I'm sure the fire department would be willing, maybe for the, I'm not going to speak for them, but the carnival grounds, there's a lot of area there, you know. So keep, keep the ideas coming. Another one I had, I didn't send out to you. Pat down in Mount Airy, I think, I want to say it's Wednesdays or Thursdays at 12 o'clock once a week. He reads a book to the kids. So I'm thinking about maybe doing that, finding some books and just finding a time that might be better for the parents to have their children, you know, listen to, to the mayor read a, a story, whether or not it's a afternoon or, you know, seven o'clock bedtime story or something. Just something different, you know, to break up the monotony that they may be facing and something to look forward to. And if you've got some other ideas, hey. Yes. And Ed, if I can give you permission, can you come, Ed, can you do a share or not? I can't hear you.
I can't show, I got a video of this, but I think I can do it just by holding my iPad up to the camera.
All right.
Want to see them now?
Sure.
Well, this, this is the dirt hauling project, this is low, low tech here. If you want to see it full screen, change your screen to speaker view there. But we'll see how this works. So that's the New Windsor end of the, of it. Let me see if I can find the Westminster end. Now, they weren't working. This is right off of Westminster Avenue that they're creating this Stormwater Pond. Quite an operation, pictures don't do it justice.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. I've seen that and I would not be, want to be that operator on top of that, that railcar. Thanks.
One other thing under new business is the alcoholic beverage license fee. Commissioner, County Commissioner Wance is recommending or suggesting that the county waive the liquor license for restaurants, not for liquor stores, but for restaurants. What that would mean for us, we, we receive 25% of the license. And the two restaurants would come around, I think, to about $750 that we would not receive. So it's a little, little bit of a help for the minister, for the restaurants. Thoughts? I told Commissioner Wance I would give him an answer by tomorrow morning. But all the other mayors are supporting this.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Any residents' concerns, raise your hand, questions? Thank you for participating. I see nine.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, real quick, does that need to be in a form of a motion? Or do you need the last, the last item about the?
Let's do a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Schultz to go support the county's waiver of the liquor license for the restaurants. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm assuming they still need to pull a license, these establishments, but we're just not charging the fee, correct?
That's correct, right, yes. And if they've already paid it, I think they'll reimburse them. If they haven't paid it, then they won't have to pay it, is my understanding. All those in favor, second time, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So, Carrie, thank you. All right, residents' concerns. Announcements, what I have, Gary already touched on the MML conference and the $95 fee for the virtual. Oh, one thing I do have here, I think I can share that. I posted this on Facebook today. And that is the Veterans Pop-Up Food Pantry, Saturday, May 9th, this Saturday, at Badland Vault Company. I think everybody's probably seen the trailer, it's been out there. Time, 11 to 1 P.M. while supplies last. Free bag, non-perishable food items will be distributed. For more information, 410-848-0393. Operation Feed Our Vets. And working on a Memorial Day service, as I mentioned before, in a New Windsor Lions Club, Blood Drive will be Thursday, June 15th, 2:00 to 7:30. Sign up as soon as possible. They are unbelievably booked up well in advance now. So there's a huge need for blood. If you're able, great. If not, if you're not able, I ask you to find a friend or a family member and to give a life-saving donation on June 15th. And if there are any questions, I'm not sure if the governor will be on the conference call Friday. Usually a couple of his cabinet members are. Usually the last week was Economic Development or Department of Labor and Health Department related issues. So if you have a question, email me at NROOP, N-R-O-O-P, at newwindsormd.org. I don't know if I'll be able to get in. Usually it's all the mayors around the state that have the availability to ask a question or two. And that'll be this, this Friday. So email me if you have a question that might pertain to the town of New Windsor or businesses or anything that's on your mind. Not guarantee that I'll be able to get in because they may take a limited amount of phone calls. Does anybody have anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I've got one question on the blood drive.
Yes.
It's at Windsor Station.
That will be at the community meeting room.
Community meeting room?
Yeah, it's been there the last two years, I think.
Okay. And do we have a number that people can call for, to sign up?
They can call me or send me an email. Or they can go to redcross.org and look for, put in a zip code, 21776. And it should be on there and they can sign up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Neil, what was the date of that?
Thursday, June 15th.
Thanks.
Do I hear a motion for a German?
Also, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, also to let people know, the Humane Society of Carroll County, they have a food bank also now for people that are struggling with being able to afford pet food. Obviously, that's a limited amount. So we want that to go to people that would absolutely need it. There has been some discussion of people possibly having to give up their animals because of struggling financially. We certainly don't want that to happen. We're very limited on how many animals we can take out there anyhow because of the recommendations of the Humane Society of the United States, the ASPCA and the National Association of Animal Care and Control recommendations. So we don't want to see somebody have to give up their animal and we don't want to see somebody have to make the decision of whether or not to feed themselves or their animals. So if you have a need, if you have an absolute need to get, to help get you by, then contact the Humane Society of Carroll County at 410-848-4810. Again, it's the Humane Society of Carroll County, 410-848-4810. That's being staffed and it's being handled by all the donations that are coming in from various. from various big, big stores, small businesses. Just citizens are donating food to the Humane Society. And we're, we're pretty well stocked for the animals we have there. But if anybody has that need, don't take advantage of it. Take advantage of it if you absolutely need it. And, and so we don't have anybody lose their pets. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, thank everybody for attending. Council staff, we don't always agree on everything, and I'm, I'm okay with that. Because I know that every, every one of you cares about this town. And that's the bottom line, so I'm, I'm happy with that. Thank you for what all you do and are going to continue doing under these challenging times. So with that, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
No move.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, end of meeting.
Aye, everybody.
Good luck.
Happy Mother's Day to the moms.